Welcome, everybody. Why don't you take your seats, please? Good morning. Ready to start? Tim? Good morning, folks. Would you please take your seats? We're ready to start. Welcome, everybody. Really glad to see everyone here this morning. It's a very exciting project many of us have been working on for many years. I am Jenny Johnson. I work for Santa Cruz Supervisor Bruce McPherson, your former Assembly Member and Senator in this area. And I'm delighted to be here today as a member of the project team who's put forth this project for the last few years. I would also like to introduce my co-Emcee, Carol Johnson, who will be assisting the two of us with introducing folks and making sure your questions get answered today. You have a really exciting program today with experts from around the state and local experts, and so we're really delighted to be able to present this information to you. And, of course, I went off-script and I didn't say anything, did I? That I was supposed to. There are question cards. We let's go over question cards. There are question cards on the front sign-in table. We also have them with two members of our marketing team, Miller Maxfield, Mr. Maxfield right here, Paula Maxfield, and J.M. Brown. I don't know where J.M. is. J.M. right there. And if you have a question, either go get a card or raise your hand and they'll give you one. And then we're going to sort the questions because there's a lot of technical information to go over, and we're going to probably bundle those that are similar and then get your questions answered. I want to make sure you know that if we run out of time to get all your questions answered, we will be circling back with each and every one of you. So important to put on your question card your contact information because we want to make sure that we get as much information out there in the next two and a half hours as we can, but it's a lot of information. So I would like to introduce our first speaker, very well-known to everyone in this room. He started his public service in 1989 as a member of the City of Salinas City Council. He's served on the Assembly as well as a county supervisor all during that time. I'm delighted to know he's from Texas, who are my people, and that he voted for AB 32. I just found that out as an Assembly Member. Please welcome Monterey County Supervisor Simone Salinas.
Thank you, Jenny. So don't fault me for being from Texas. I'm a Californian now, so we left back in the '60s to come and do some harvesting here. But certainly want to thank you to our Monterey County Board of Supervisors Chambers, and thank you for being here today. You know, this is an important discussion that jurisdictions, cities and counties need to have because at some point you have to make a recommendation to your jurisdiction whether this is a route we want to go to or not. And the fact is that this provides our area, the Central Coast, a very good opportunity to do what communities are doing throughout the State of California, that's to reduce our carbon footprint, the greenhouse gases. If we go this route, there's a potential that this could reduce the greenhouse gas emissions by 50% in a couple of years. Again, as you look at the numbers, is it financially feasible? Can we sustain this? Can our communities support this? And so those are the questions hopefully that can be answered and some of the discussion points that you can have. But before I forget, I also want to thank a couple of folks that helped coordinate this meeting, Dan Bertoli. She'll thank you, Dan, and Joanne Iwamoto. Thank you for coordinating with you folks. But again, as indicated, I did vote for AB 32 back about 15 years ago when this was being discussed. We all knew that there was an issue, global warming. What are we going to do about it? And what can realistically and feasibly be done to get Californians, to get our residents to understand this? And one of the reasons that I was sort of neutral in the beginning on this issue was because I represent an agricultural area. And I have ag folks that need heavy equipment, they need trucks, they need all that diesel. So what they were telling me is if they're going to ban this kind of vehicles, what are we going to use then? And so talking with the author, we eventually narrowed it down. So I said, "Let's go back to the manufacturers. We've got to go to the big three, the big four." They were lobbying hard against this type of legislation. It was too radical, too revolutionary to force the manufacturers to make more fuel-efficient vehicles. Well, after that, now we see what's going on. We're all recognizing the importance of alternative energy. Here is a way for our communities to say we want to become more energy self-sufficient. We want to be able to use some of those benefits, profits that come from the cell of energy to be able to put it back into our communities to create more alternative energy, renewable sources, or create more jobs here that can benefit from that. So very important. Monterey County is now on the verge also of doing more work with our ag industry. A couple of folks in the ag industry have put in wind turbines. If you go down to Solid Ed, if you go down to Gonzales, you see the turbines are not only fueling processing plants, but also some of the sewer plants. Shite Vineyards, some of the wine folks are interested in using turbine wind energy also, so we're seeing some interest in that. But I think it's the, to be able to give our community a choice, to be able to give them an opportunity to look at different ways to generate energy and do it in a way that's good for the environment and that also can be economically self-sustaining. So I want to thank you. This is one of several study sessions that we're going to have to give you the information you need to make that recommendation to your jurisdiction whether we are prepared and ready to go in together as a region or maybe not so ready yet, but maybe in the future. So important for you to get that information, take it back to your jurisdiction. Again, I'm glad that some of our county staff are here also because they've got to prepare a recommendation for our full board, but look forward to continue to work with you and be on a co-presenter with Jenny here. So thank you, Jenny, and thank you. Thank you for coming.
Good morning, and thank you for being here. My name is Carol Johnson. As Jenny stated, I'm with the County of Santa Cruz General Services Department. And our first presenters are Sean Marshall and Mark Landman. Sean Marshall is the founder and Executive Director of Lean Energy, a nonprofit membership organization that supports successful formation and expansion of CCEs around the county, excuse me, around the country, including the State of California, New York, and Illinois. We also have Mark Landman, who's a board member from Salinas, excuse me, Sonoma Clean Power. Mark, as Mayor of the City of Cotati, helped bring forward a revolutionary change when the Cotati City Council was the first to unanimously support CCE in Sonoma County. Mark is a founding member of Sonoma Clean Power Authority Board of Directors, where he serves as Vice Chair and Chair. So I'll turn it over to Sean and Mark.
Excuse me, Carol. I'm sorry. My vision is not good with these glasses on. Sorry about that, Carol. All right. And they caught that on film, right? I'm going to set the timer here.
We're just that excited about CCE, folks.
We could go on. We could. Some of you have heard us go on and on, so we're going to do our best to stay in the time allotted. But the first thing I'll say is, good morning, everyone. Thank you very much for having us. As Carol mentioned, I'm Sean. This is Mark. I am going to start today just by giving you a basic overview of what community choice energy is, how it works, some of the rules of the road and basic mechanics. And then Mark will follow up, giving some performance metrics and tell you a little bit about how it's been going up in Sonoma County with Sonoma Clean Power and some of their achievements in a very short period of time. So, Mark, you can either hang here or there, whichever you prefer.
I'll do there. There's a room to walk.
Okay, super. So I don't trip over you. That'd be good. So first things first, how many of you in this room are brand-new to the topic of community choice energy? Can we have a raise of hands? Brand-new. Okay. So we're going to start at the beginning, and then we're going to have plenty of time at the end of the presentation for questions. So if I could ask you to write them down, and then we'll be sure to answer any kind of detailed questions that you might have. So the first slide. Nope. Uh-oh. Ask for your assistance, please. What this slide is going to show is an illustration of how community choice energy works. So the basic definition of the program is that community choice enables local governments, either a single government or groups of them, to band together to procure and/or develop power on behalf of their residential, business, and municipal, agricultural, all the different accounts, the electricity accounts, that exist within that particular service territory. What we have seen so far with community choice energy is that it has proven to both reduce greenhouse gas reductions rapidly because of the choice that you have over the type of power you put on the grid, but it also has spurred the development of new renewable clean power as well as lowered electricity rates for consumers. So there is kind of a trifecta of potential benefits of this program. What CCE does is that it forms a partnership with the existing utility. So here, that would be Pacific Gas &amp; Electric. It forms that partnership so that at the end of the day, you as a customer really experience almost nothing that's different in terms of how you receive your power and pay for your power. But the key differential is that the power that's coming through the grid is much greener. And we're going to look at some metrics and statistics about how much greener so far. So quick context here. This just gives you a sense that community choice energy, also called community choice aggregation, by the way, that's the technical term, exists around the country. And it came to California in 2002 with the passage of AB 117. That was the enabling legislation. That legislation was then amended in 2011 with SB 790 that formed a utility code of conduct and provided greater clarity around the cooperative partnership nature of the community choice program and that of the investor-owned utility. So we're the sole provider out here on the West. I do believe that it's going, we're going to see some expansion here in the West Coast, a lot of activity in the Midwest and East. In California, since Marin Clean Energy was the first program to launch in 2010, in the last five and a half years, we have seen first kind of a slow increase with Sonoma Clean Power coming online in 2011. We are entering a period as of about the middle part of last year. We are entering a period of rapid, rapid expansion. Approximately 25 cities, 25 counties representing hundreds of cities around the state are now either investigating the program or in active formation. And that is primarily driven by an opportunity to meet Climate Action Plan goals and really have that dramatic impact on climate action or greenhouse gas reductions. So why are communities so interested in this program? Well, there are a couple of reasons that have all borne out to be true. The first is that it's a program that is responsive to local environmental and economic goals. So we've already talked about one of the key drivers here is greenhouse gas reduction and increased use of renewables. But as I mentioned before, it has so far proven to modestly reduce rates, certainly can stabilize rates, that's never a guarantee, but so far this program has been able to be very competitive with the investor-owned utilities up and down the state. It offers consumers a choice where you don't currently have one. Because California is a regulated energy state, the investor-owned utilities have a monopoly position. And so what CCE is able to do is to separate that, open the door to market competition, which ultimately we've seen has the benefits of driving up climate benefits while also stabilizing and lowering prices. The program is revenue-supported, not taxpayer subsidized. So what's important to understand is that going forward, there may be, unknown as yet, but there may be some local governments who pitch in to provide some startup capital to get this program off the ground because there will be some additional expense. However, if you launch, and it's highly likely that you would if you get that interested and decide to move down this path, that initial capital is fully repayable through initial program revenues. And after that, the program is self-funding through a redirected revenue stream of the electrical generation charges that were previously being sent to PG&E now gets redirected into the CCE program in order to purchase power, develop power, and provide all of the other programs that you may wish to undertake. Mentioned just previously that CCEs are offering stable, so far cheaper, electricity rates for its customers. It allows a rapid switch to a clean power supply. So what we're going to hear from Mark is how, within the first year of their program, they were able to double down on their climate action goals. In Marin County, we were ahead of the game, and the county was able to achieve its Climate Action Plan goals about five years ahead of schedule just by making the switch to Marin Clean Energy and really shifting what it was investing in in terms of clean power on behalf of its customers. Last but not least, the CCE program does provide an additional funding stream for any programs that you all may wish to consider. And that's the beauty of this program, is that it's highly flexible. You have the option to do many different things, whether it's energy efficiency, electric vehicles, we'll hear more about that in a moment, battery storage, and the like. So here's a snapshot of the operational CCEs. Full disclosure, Clean Power San Francisco ought to be on this chart. They just launched last month, actually earlier this month. They began enrollment in their first phase of customers, which are primarily commercial customers. But the programs that have been operational from 2010 include MCE up in Marin County. They're now serving approximately 175,000 customers in their county, as well as the County of Napa and parts of Contra Costa County. So they've expanded now to be in three counties, and actually four with the City of Benicia. Their rates last year were 2% to 5% below PG&E's rates, electrical rates, I should, let's be clear about that. They have three product options for customers. I am 100% deep-green customer for MCE. Their default is 56% renewable. Their voluntary opt-up is 100% renewable, and they just have launched their 100% local SOWL project, which is a community-based solar project for customers that choose to opt into that product. For a point of benchmark, in 2015, PG&E is reporting a 27% renewable portfolio. So just so you have a sense of what the comparison is there, PG&E is at 27%. Sonoma Clean Power launched in 2014. They have approximately 200,000 customers now. Last year, they were running 6% to 14% below PG&E. Mark can tell you a little bit more about why, but they did really well on the market, have some excellent hydro resources to boost their renewable power. They have two product offerings, a 36% default renewable and then the voluntary 100%. And you will see a similar result in Lancaster, which is down in the LA area. They're small. They're a single city that decided to do this on their own. They have 55,000 customers, 3% to 4% below Southern California Edison's rates, and a power portfolio that is quite similar to Sonoma's. So basic program mechanics. Happy to answer any questions about this if you have them at the end. The first thing to understand is that per state law, and this is uniform across the country, community choice energy is enacted as an opt-out program. So it's quite similar, for example, to other municipal programs, whether that's garbage or water, where all customers are enrolled in the program. The CCE becomes your default electricity provider, but customers have the choice to opt out and return to full bundled service through PG&E at any time. Customers always have that choice, and that's why we talk about this being a window into choice, where you currently don't have the choice to make any kind of shift with PG&E. The utility continues to provide all of the consolidated billing, all of the transmission, distribution, maintenance of the grid. If the power goes out in a big storm, it's still Pacific Gas &amp; Electric that you would call and that will come and repair those lines. Your electric generation, your electric bill pretty much remains the same. I'm going to show you a picture of it in just a second. The only thing that changes on that bill is a line item for electric generation services. And then you also have an exit fee called the Power Charge Indifference Adjustment, PCIA. It's not our favorite topic right now because that exit fee is something that is going up and is something you have to layer in when you set your rates. However, it looks like the programs who are launching, that are launching this year, even with that PCIA, they're still able to come in at rates that are competitive to PG&E and actually slightly below. PG&E programs for low-income or care customers, those stay the same. So all of the programs that they have in place remain, and you do not lose any access, your customers do not lose access to those. The California Public Utilities Commission is involved because we are partnering with the utility. So they must certify the CCE plan, they oversee the utility service agreement, and handle other regulatory requirements of the CCE program. Most CCEs are run through a joint powers agency. Many of you in this room will be familiar with that structure. There are other models that are coming to fruition, but for the most part, when you have a multi-jurisdictional program, a JPA does provide, as far as we have been able to tell legally, the greatest protection in terms of separation of assets and liabilities between the member jurisdictions and that of the CCE program. And for most local governments, that's a very important component. Here's a picture of Marin Clean Energy's sample energy bill. So I get one of these every month. As I mentioned before, I'm a voluntary, deep-green customer. For that, in my, I would say, medium-sized home, that costs me about $5 extra per month to voluntarily opt up to that 100%. So you can see maybe off in the distance there, the little green lines. Those are the line items that shift. And this, just as a reminder, that PG&E continues to do all of the billing, they collect the revenues, and then it gets paid out back to the CCE program. This chart is an example borrowed from the City of San Mateo. When they did their Climate Action Plan a couple of years ago, they looked at a number of different initiatives that they could undertake to meet their goals in terms of greenhouse gas reductions. And what you see across the bottom there is the metrics that they ran for participation in a CCE program. So you can see how that stacks up compared to other very laudable initiatives, by the way, whether that's changing out your LED lighting and your municipal lighting, doing any other kind of transportation, any other local programs. You can see that CCE really gets you there pretty quickly. So last couple of slides here before I turn it over to Mark. We've also seen so far in the last five years that community choice can be a local innovator and a local integrator for energy-based programs that you might like to consider. You may actually come up with something that's completely new and innovative that the other CCAs around the state can learn from, and we are definitely seeing that right now. It's a period of great creativity. But a couple of quick metrics. MCE Clean Power and Sonoma Clean Power have collectively put over 300 megawatts of new renewable resource on the grid on behalf of their customers. Of that, 100 megawatts is local. So Mark will talk about some very innovative things coming down. MCE has just entered into its first 10.5-megawatt solar project on a refinery site in Richmond. And that project will be built over the next, the coming year, and then they will have the opportunity to purchase that project and have it as part of their portfolio of owned assets. And that helps stabilize rates and also invest in the local economy. And so we see that in action, along with quite a lot of net energy metering, feed-in tariff, and smaller distributed resources that are also in play. Public-private partnerships. So community-based solar, I mentioned, the local SOWL project is a solar project based in North Marin that has 200 customers that have a set price on their premium solar product for a period of 20 years. And that helped get that local project built. Many of these projects, and most, built with project labor agreements and union labor too, because I know there are some folks in the room that are concerned about that. MCE also has a partnership with Tesla for residential battery storage and commercial battery storage. And so this will not be the last partnership that they have, but it's a great example of the kind of public-private partnership that can happen, using that local community program as a channel to integrate clean power at terms and conditions that are often advantageous to a CCE customer. And we also see that with electric vehicle charging stations, on-bill financing, there's PACE integration. There are so many ways that you can leverage this program to achieve other local goals that it's pretty exciting, and Mark's got some great stories that he'll share, so I won't steal your thunder there. Important to know, some of you are very interested in energy efficiency. Community choice programs do have the option of electing to become an energy efficiency administrator, thereby receiving a pro-rata share of the public goods charge that's collected by the utility. So CCE can apply for that money and receive it into the program in order to have your own locally-based EE program. So that becomes another revenue stream. There is on-bill repayment, green business loans that MCE has put together. There's also local job training opportunities and that can focus on underserved. So I'll just be quick and say that MCE did a partnership with the Local Community Development Corporation in Marin City. It's one of our pockets of poverty, I would say, in Marin. And they did a jobs training program for energy efficiency audits and solar installs. And so those folks got plugged into a company called Grid Alternatives out of Richmond. They also have quite a lot of local development and jobs training. So you have all the flexibility in the world, if you so choose, to create those kind of partnerships, to have the multiplier benefit of economic development and low-income community development. So my last slide today will be to tell you that no program is without its risks. The good news is that many of those risks have now been mitigated through experience and proof. So when I was on the board in the early days of Marin Clean Energy, we dealt with all of these things and then some. There was a lot of gray hair, but at the end of the day, it all worked out. It took us a while, and the good news is that it's getting easier and easier now, especially with the utilities coming along and not providing the kind of opposition that they had previously. So the risks generally fall into four buckets. The first is rate competition and market fluctuations. Rates will vary with market conditions. So the electricity, the energy space can be very volatile. And Kirby, who will be up a little later, might be able to tell you something about that. They've been in the space for a really long time. So what's the mitigation? Mitigation is you've got to hire staff with just superior power market expertise who have, you know, experience not only perhaps with utilities, but also in power procurement. Diversified power portfolio is important, where you would have different types of power, different contract terms, term lengths, all of that. So you're basically building a power portfolio that, where you are not putting all of your eggs in any one basket. That's, you know, pretty standard strategy so far that has worked well. Another risk is customer opt-outs. The good news here is that we've seen opt-out rates drop precipitously as these programs have expanded and come online, such that now, in San Francisco, they've now had their second enrollment notice go out, and they're at below 3% opt-out. Sonoma is below 10%, I believe, Mark, for opt-outs. And so as we see proof of concept, people are getting more comfortable with this, and the retention rate is very high. But you've got to watch your rates because at the end of the day, rates do matter. Availability of carbon-free power supply. Kirby might mention this in his presentation. One of the things that we're conscious of is that the utilities have all of the nuclear power. Those are their plants. Many programs don't want to deal with nuclear power anyway. But regardless, the GHG-free content really comes from your California Qualified Renewable Resources and in large part, large hydro. And that, you know, that resource is a popular resource for GHG-free resource. But there is a lot of it up in the Pacific Northwest, so we think that we're fine now, but that is going to be something to watch going forward. Last but not least, the game has shifted from a public marketing campaign to now a lot of activity at the California Public Utilities Commission to make sure that the rules of the road for how this works in partnership with the utility are fair to community choice programs and the departing load that it offers. And I will tell you that the regulators are somewhat behind. And I will tell you that the regulators are somewhat behind the market. We are looking at an incredible growth in the next five years. So, I think you're going to see a lot of activity at the CPUC. It takes a while to get things moving there, but things have been going well. And I'll say the same in Sacramento. We've had a number of victories over the last couple of years. So, more work to do there, but so far, so good in Sacramento. The biggest mitigation strategy there is to plug in and participate. And so, when Monterey Bay Community Power gets off the ground, we will happily help you plug in and participate and join the growing ranks of community choice programs. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mark, and then we'll take your questions. Thank you.
Well, good morning, everybody. As Sean mentioned, my name is Mark Lehman, and I will start off by saying that I'm here today wearing at least two hats, but as I think about it, actually three. So, I'm here as a representative of the Sonoma Clean Power Board of Directors. I'm also here helping lean as a project manager to help you look at getting started. But really, as I thought about this and where I was two years ago, I'm here because I've gone down the same path you have. Two years ago, I was an elected official, and I was a community member, looking at this decision and trying to see, how did this work? What are the pluses? What are the minuses? So, I think at this point, Sean's given us a very good idea of the basics. So, let's take a few slides here and actually look at the emerging track record that we actually have to look at now, kind of a handy thing to have, because a few years ago, this was all very, very new. And I want to look at three key indicators that I believe you all will be interested in. Pardon? I got the clicker right here. And I'm about ready to make my dramatic jump to the next slide. Thank you. There's timing involved in all of this. So, we're going to be looking at financial performance. Does this actually pencil out for us? We need to know that. Local investment, what are our opportunities there? What sort of partnerships can we expect to see in the first few years? Because these are questions the public wants to know. And finally, increasing use of renewables. Good, but what does that really mean in the first few years as you're starting up? Now, I will mention that I will be focusing on Sonoma Clean Power largely, and there is a reason for that, but I'm not going to share that with you until the end of my presentation here. So, we'll wait just a minute for that. That was impressive. There we go. Scared everybody. So, I'm going to start by talking about program economics, because I think that's the thing that everybody is curious about. It's the first question the public wants to know and representatives of the public want to know. Bottom line, our program economics strong. And I think looking at the example of this particular CCE, Sonoma Clean Power, two years of operation, they're sitting on a total net position of $35 million sitting in the bank. If we take a look at where they're at as of this year, as of 3/31, all startup debt is paid off, including the bridge funding that is completely paid. They are somewhat ahead of schedule in building reserves. They will hit $30 million by the end of this year with a $50 million goal. At the same time, for this year's budget setting, they've decided to invest a minimum, and I will stress that, is a minimum of $3.5 million for efficiency programs. And the direction from the board to staff is if they bring back a sufficiently ambitious and fleshed-out program, there is more to be done there, potentially up to almost double that. Now, at the same time, we're seeing all those performance indicators and economics, they're also looking to maintain their competitiveness, because we have to be competitive in rates, and we'll be providing an across-the-board reduction in customer pricing this year, largely as a response to the PCIA adjustment, which was surprising for all of us. So, I will note, what we're seeing is program indicators are very strong, and we're seeing these same solid indicators at other places. If we look at MCE, they are finishing this year with a net position, I believe, $25 million. And at the same time, no recommended rate increase for '16, '17. And interestingly enough, what fascinates me with that much, much higher renewables portion compared to any other CCE in the state that I know of, that 52% gives us all a case of envy. So, that's a pretty good thing. Sean mentioned Lancaster Choice Energy, a smaller municipal entity, first year of operation, yet they have been able to deliver cleaner power at lower rates as well. So, I think we can see here, there is room to move economically within the CCE. So, the next question we look at is, what sort of local investment, what sort of local value can actually build? And we'll take a look at some of the ways that Sonoma Clean Power has worked to do that. I'm going to start by just saying one fact that I think sums a lot of it up. Sonoma Clean Power has already procured about 20% of its long-term energy needs from within its own county. That's a dramatic increase over the investor-owned utility. PG&E's approximately 3% that they had back in 2013. So, in the first few years, that's a big change very quickly. Let's take a look at some of the ways that we're able to do that. A very basic thing, they offered a net energy metering program, which they have dubbed Net Green. Some of you, I understand in the audience, are new to this, so I'll just give a quick capsule demonstration. What this means is, if you have solar on your roof, occasionally you might generate extra energy. What you want is a way to spin that meter backward. Well, we provide that. But what a CCE can do is take a step beyond what the investor-owned utilities do and actually offer inducements. We can give you a better deal. And that's not just because we're nice folks, although we are very nice folks. We want to incentivize you to build out solar. As a homeowner, if you're going to put solar in your roof, we want you to fill as much as possible and not be concerned that doing your whole roof is losing a financial equation because you're not paid well. So, last year, in not a full year for Net Green, Sonoma Clean Power put back into the local community over $200,000. And with that, we were shocked at the number of happy customers and unsolicited testimonials we received, particularly, some of the school districts got checks they weren't used to. So, we think that'll be very helpful in driving that full solar build-out. This year, our assessment is we'll see about $650,000 back into Sonoma County. That's money that doesn't leave our county, and I think that's something all of us here share, we like to see financial bleed be stopped. So, it's a very good thing. Something a little different now, and a name that I worry about pronouncing, so I'll go very slowly, flotovoltaics. Kind of something new, and this is an example, I put this here, because it's an example of the type of partnerships that will be unique to every region. And this was a partnership that was unique for us. This was a partnership with the Sonoma County Water Agency. They had a problem. Their problem was that they had six large wastewater ponds, that they had to spend a lot of money buying a relatively noxious chemical to provide a chemical form of shade so algae didn't grow. Clearly, a situation where some shade would be beneficial, there's no question about it. But because this water agency had a CCE in their county, they said, wait a minute. Going beyond shade, could we actually put solar arrays over this? Could we actually turn into something that was actually a solution? Turn that problem into a solution? And that's exactly what is going to happen. This will be the largest floating solar array in the entire country. And as a matter of fact, the second-largest in the world. We missed it by that much, I understand. Had we known, maybe we could have found one more pond to start. But it will generate, or it should generate, if engineering holds out, 12.5 megawatts from those six ponds. That's about 3,000 homes' worth of power, so it's significant. And clearly, what's interesting, beyond the local jobs for construction, installation, and potentially maintenance, what I find interesting, this is expandable. This is something that could grow. It can grow to our wine industry, to our agricultural industry, and a lot of municipal accounts as well, once the engineering is complete and validated. But beyond that, what's really great is, once we work the kinks out, we can share this with the entire state. And this gets back to the point Sean made, how CCE poteniates innovation. Think of it, all of us individually, in our locations, finding solutions to different problems. Once we work those out and share them, we're going to see an exponential growth in solutions because of this. Before I move off this slide, I'll talk just for a second for another type of partnership and another product that's a slightly different way of reaching a problem, but could bring unique value back to this county. And this is SCP's Drive Evergreen Pilot. Now, why is a CCE taking a look at EVs? Well, if you form a CCE, in your first year, you will enjoy a market reduction in greenhouse gas emissions because of the cleaner power mix that you will offer. I feel pretty comfortable predicting that. That is something we see. But as you look at the rest of the problem, what you will find is that the transportation sector has not stopped. Now, in Sonoma County, that's about 65% of our emissions. So, this is why, this is something that falls within the type of problem that CCE can take a look at tackling. And this particular CCE is looking at a range of options, starting at the very simple, low-level ideas, investor in infrastructure. You increase charging stations, remove range anxiety, there's greater adoption. To the next step, maybe, can we do cost savings for customers? Can we do leasing assists? Can we do group purchases, perhaps, if this gets big enough? To even more interesting ideas that are down the road, but perhaps not that far down the road. If you think of a county with wide, wide adoption of electric vehicles, how could that system, and potentially smart chargers? How could that system be used as a demand reduction tool? Even further, how many batteries do you have connected to that system? What sort of distributed storage do you potentially have there? This is the type of thing we had of, so I think this gives you an idea of the range, from small to large, from near-term to potentially exciting next-step items that you can do working with local and state partners to address climate challenges. And let's stop for just a second and take a look at renewables, because there's always a question. A lot of people in the community want to know, what are you really going to do about this? We hear a lot of talk, but what results do you see? So, we'll start with the small and work with some larger things. For this particular CCE, the first thing they went to was a feed-in tariff. And again, for those of you who are new to all these acronyms, this is essentially a next step past net energy metering, if you will. These are actually local, small-scale renewable energy generation contracts distributed throughout the county, all at or below a megawatt. They are 10- to 20-year contracts for RPS-compliant renewables. You'll typically see them on rooftops of buildings, shade in car lots, blighted areas. But again, just like CCE was able to do with net energy metering, we can offer inducements to actually speed that local renewable, because we want to build out local solar. So, we offer bonus criteria, try to make it a better deal. We include small systems we'll give a break to, previously developed sites. Again, those blighted areas we talked about in my county, like you, we have a lot of prime agglad, we don't want to use that. We want to find those good locations that are doing nothing else. We certainly support local businesses, and we'll give them a break on their rates. And we even have, speaking of labor, a training incentive for contractors. If they use local apprentices and work a certain threshold of hours, there's a potential for a break there, too. So, in its first years, they were able to contract for three megawatts of power, and I believe there's a fourth one coming forth fairly soon. But that three megawatts alone, that's enough for almost 20% of a rather small city's needs, so it is indeed a good start. Let's step to something a little bigger, which is the Mustang Project. This is a large central California solar generation project, and it's done in partnership with recurrent energy. And Sonoma Clean Power has contracted for 70 megawatts of this clean California solar for the next 20 years. And it was actually not just going to buy this power, but this CCE's existence actually helped build this facility. So, as we look to, can we work both on the small scale to build electrical and solar build-out? Can we also work in the larger scale? You see examples of that there. But I brought it up because there's another question that often comes up. Can CCE help drive good jobs? What is the role for labor in CCE? Well, not only did this particular project come to this CCE with very good rates, but it also came with a project labor agreement. And I will note, perhaps unsurprisingly, it was completed early and will be online early. So, if you're interested in that, there is room to move in this area, too. It can be done. Likewise, we looked around, how can we source local energy and how can we put that to use? We have a resource that's very good, local geothermal, the geysers. We've entered into long-term contracts there. This is a logical investment for one reason, because geothermal's consistent, pretty smooth. 24 hours a day, you have a certain output, and you can kind of count on that, unless there's an earthquake or a fire. On the other hand, it pairs very nicely with our other renewables, which are more peaky. But even better for us, we have two products, as Sean mentioned, an entry level, then 100% renewable, which is called Evergreen. Well, we wanted a local source to act as the source for that, for our opt-up, and so that's what the geysers is used for. So, geothermal powers that. But again, these sorts of small-to-larger investments are not atypical at all in this field. MCE has contracted for, to me, an astounding, what, 177 megawatts of wind from Kern County? Again, they've had a lot of success and a lot of growth, so they need this, but that's huge. At the same time, you mentioned the 10.5 in solar in Richmond, and even smaller, my old hometown in Novato, I understand you're partnering for 1.5 local solar. So, you can see those sort of things. And Lancaster Choice Energy, we talked about, brand-new, much smaller than the rest of us, but they're partnering, I understand, already to build a 10-megawatt local solar project? That's pretty aggressive, and I love, they have the big, audacious goal. They want to be the first net-zero city. They're going for generating all their own power locally, renewably, and what they have excess, they intend to sell. So, that's pretty exciting. So, we're getting to the end of my time. Let me hit a few final points for you, if I might. Since Sonoma Clean Power's launch in 2014, the customers in Sonoma County have cumulatively saved over $50 million. That comes from joint rate comparisons co-produced with PG&E. In their first year of operation, this CCE reduced greenhouse gas emissions 48% compared with the investor-owned utilities' power mix in their last published data from 2013. Just the contracts that we've mentioned here today, the ones they've entered to in this roughly two years of just starting up, alone will realize 135 megawatts of local and California renewables every year for decades to come. So, I think the results are beginning to come clear for all of us. The economics of CCE work. CCE can really increase local investment and reduce financial bleed, and that, most assuredly, CCE can greatly increase the speed of the switch to renewables. So, I mentioned to you at the beginning of this, though, I was using Sonoma Clean Power as a comparison. And you might assume that's because I'm from Sonoma Clean Power and have some comfort with that. There is some truth in that. But actually, I had a different thought. Sonoma Clean Power is not a bad comparable for Monterey Bay Community Energy. Sonoma Clean Power serves a county of roughly half a million people. You will be slightly bigger than that, I believe, but close enough that that's not a bad, very rough comparable. So, with the assessment that if market conditions stayed relatively stable, if power costs didn't dramatically change, then it's not unreasonable to suggest that Monterey Bay Community Energy could potentially see similar results in a rough timeframe like that, too. So, I hope you get the sense that CCE is a very powerful tool, because it is, and I'm looking forward to see what you're able to do with it. And with that, I'll invite Sean back up, and I think we'll wrap this up.
We do have time for one question, but I've lost the other mic.
It's right here.
Gee, there we go. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Sean and Mark. Really informative. We are a little bit behind time, however, and you've answered most of the questions that we had in your topic in the presentation. Thank you for explaining net metering and feed-in tariff. That's great. But I do have a generic question from the audience, and that is, if our counties and cities join, oh, great, thank you. If our counties and cities join, does that, and you've talked a lot about private investment and private incentives from the CCE, does that obligate the counties and cities to themselves, their own municipality, build renewable energy projects?
Can I take that, or are you going to take it?
Let's both take a second.
No, it does not obligate a city or county to make any kind of investment. The assets and liabilities of the Joint Powers Agency that will run Monterey Bay Community Power remain separate from those of the member agencies. If a city or county chooses to invest in a project, that may become an option that you would want to explore, but there is no obligation or requirement for that at all.
Yeah, I'll just leapfrog, and then I mentioned, beyond that, we do not even require, at least in Sonoma County, for municipalities that join to have to bring their municipal accounts. Now, they all have, because it's turned out to be beneficial. So, there's no great pressure that way, and there's no pressure in terms of local finances being involved with this. But there's a big firewall there.
Great presentations, a lot of information. And if you have subsequent questions for these folks, we are going to have a networking opportunity at the end of our presentation today. You can also fill out a card, and we'll get you your answers after the presentation today. Thank you so much, Mark and Sean. Thank you so much for coming.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Patrick Matthews, General Manager and Chief Administrative Officer for Salinas Valley Solid Waste Authority. Mr. Matthews has 33 years of environmental management field. He has eight years as a General Manager and Chief Administrative Officer for the Salinas Valley Solid Waste Authority, and he has been a member of the PDAC since its inception in 2013.
Thank you, Carol. I'll try to keep my comments fairly quick here, because I know there's going to be a lot of questions. Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you. As Carol said, I've been a member of the PDAC along with a number of members of our community, representing a variety of the jurisdictions across the tri-county region. So you'll hear me refer to PDAC very often. That's the Project Development Advisory Committee. We're an ad hoc group that was formed primarily to evaluate, study, and look at the feasibility of CCEs in this community. So as we go through this, we'll talk a little bit about what the role of the PDAC was. That was really to look at, how feasible is this? What are the things we have to study and understand to be able to give our elected officials, our jurisdictions, a clear picture of the viability of this? Is it good for our community, and will it create long-term benefits? So as you can see, the greatest, one of the greatest efforts that was part of this process was really to get all the jurisdictions, all 21 cities and counties in the tri-county region, to come forward and say, yes, we're going to participate. And I want to really thank Jenny and her staff, because they did that heavy lift. As all of you know, getting 21 jurisdictions to agree to do something collectively was itself a major undertaking, just to get us all to the table. And with that, we had a number of reps from each of the jurisdiction, cities, counties, as well as a few of our local joint powers agencies, our solid waste agency, our sister agency, Monterey Regional Waste Management District, as well as the Monterey Bay Regional Air District as well. Also, we're part of that advisory committee, because we represent unique interests in the power field and the energy and air quality field that would benefit from formation of such an agency. So the advisory committee really looked at a number of different things. And so I'm going to go through, one, first, the recommendations, I'm sorry, really, sort of the goals and objectives of the policy decisions that drove the study, and then a little bit about the basic recommendations coming out of the advisory committee that we're going to talk about in great deal later today. So I'm going to bypass these, and I'll come back. I want to start with the guiding principles. One of the most important things is really establishing, what is the reason for this? What are going to, what principles, what ideas are going to drive the formation of this agency? So the first one really is simply serving the community goals and local policy objectives relating to greenhouse gas reductions and increased statewide and local renewable energy supply. That's something we're all looking at, at the statewide level, we're looking at it at the individual jurisdictional level, and even many of your local jurisdictions, utility agencies are also looking at that. We also want to make sure that we're controlling and safeguarding customer revenues, ensuring long-term financial viability, and that the local government ownership is structured in such a way that we make sure that we have good, stable power supplies, even in the face of fluctuating energy demand. We also want to offer competitive rates and choices for electric services that do not include the use of energy sources such as unbundled renewable energy credits, which is really just a simple way of saying, we're buying somebody else's credit, not necessarily their energy. We also want to avoid the use of coal and nuclear resources, and to really prioritize the development of local and state renewable energy. That is one of the real core goals that we identified very early on as an essential part of a CCE. We also wanted to be able to incentivize and rapidly develop new renewable energy locally. And CCE is a great opportunity for us to take, as we heard from Marin and Sonoma. They both have substantial reserves now that are available for them to use in their community to help support and develop new renewable energy at the local level. We also wanted to pursue long-term power procurement strategies and local power ownerships that really hedge against the market and incorporates diversity in our supplies along with new technologies and products. We want to plan for the long-term financial viability through integrated resource planning, in-house financial management, transparent rate setting, and policies that build program reserves. Building robust reserves enhances the agency's credit, and so early on, that is one of the key goals, is to pay off that startup debt, that bridge loan, and to be able to begin to build up not only revenues and resources that you can use to generate new jobs, new energy sources locally, but to also build up your financial standing and make the agency an attractive entity for investors and banks that may want to come in and invest in new projects. We also want to maintain a firewall between the assets of the CCE and our local jurisdictions and their municipal general funds. We want to adhere to local statutory regulatory compliance requirements in terms of energy development. We want to implement risk management strategies and practices that ensure transparency and accountability to our local community and to the oversight agencies. And as you heard from Marin and Sonoma, we also want to be able to offer those same complementary programs, things like feed-in tariffs, net metering, energy efficiency retrofits, demand response, community solar projects, electrical, electric vehicle charging, battery storage, as well as support local training and entrepreneurship that helps develop our local technical resources to support and run these types of projects. We also wanted to establish criteria for the use of surplus revenue. So there are recommendations, you'll hear more from our consultants later on today about that. We also want to really make sure, and I think this is really one of the critical parts of this, is that we're aligning with our local jurisdictions sustainability and climate action planning goals and objectives, to make sure that we're doing something that's going to benefit all the communities, not just from rate parity or rate benefits, but that we're also helping on things like AB32, helping agencies or local jurisdictions reduce our greenhouse gases. And of course, we want, the strategic goal really is to be an energy self-sufficient community with lots and lots of local energy build-out. That is absolutely one of the longest and most important-term goals of this, is that we become energy self-sustaining. So I'm just going to go through very quickly, a little bit about the, some of the recommendations that came out of the PDAC. Now, of course, formation is very important. This is the, one of the big purposes of our meeting today, is to start talking about formation, what that means, when that's going to happen, and what the processes are going forward from this point, this point on. We've identified a startup date, or at least initial formation date of the end of October. There's a little flexibility in that date, but we're targeting that for a lot of good reasons. I think Jenny can probably speak a little more eloquently on the market issues related to that, but it really just has to do with the timing of forming the agency, seating a board, having that board given adequate time to begin to create codes, begin to decide on their operating structure, begin to hire their staff, their executive leadership, and to begin to get things off the ground. So that is one of the recommendations, is that we do ask that the jurisdictions all try to consider the feasibility of making a early entry commitment by October 31st. However, that being flexible, the other option, obviously, for anybody, is if you're not ready, there will be an on-ramping process. It will be ability for you to come in later. So there's not a requirement that everybody has to sign on on October 31st. But the advantage of coming in early is simply, you get to set the tone for the new agency. You get to help write the ordinances, help design the system, help make those initial decisions are going to be the guiding principles for that agency, so that there is an advantage to be an early adopter, but it's not a requirement for an agency to participate. So best practices, just a few kind of basic things. The PDAC really focused on looking at, what is everybody else doing? And obviously, you're hearing today from some of the leaders in California CCEs, these are the agencies we looked very strongly to in terms of their structures, their best practices, so that we could come up with some recommendations. We felt mirrored what is already working in the state. We're not recreating the wheel, but absolutely wanting to have a structure that we know is proven and will work going forward. So first is, this would be a standalone joint regional agency, JPA-type structure. Many of you are familiar with those. They're basically where you have members of multiple jurisdictions that represent the governing body for those jurisdictions. Of course, that underlying goal is really that we want to make this a locally owned and controlled facility in operation, and so having all of our local representatives at the table is very important. We also want to take advantage of all the CCE experts we have out there. You've heard from a couple of them today, and there are many others in the state, including our esteemed consultants that will be up here talking in a few minutes. We want to make sure that we're regionally equitable, meaning that we're building out projects, creating jobs, and those resources across the region in an equitable way, so that everybody's getting the benefits. And those are the side benefits of a CCE, and that's the local jobs and renewable energy construction going on in the area. We also want to recommend a board that is reasonable. We identified a board makeup, a maximum of 11 to 13 members. That will be, again, that's a recommendation. The ultimate board that's seated, though, will make the final decisions on these. These are only recommendations based on our evaluation of best practices. We also recommend there be a technical advisory committee. Elected officials have a lot on their plates and aren't going to be offered the amount of time they're going to need to really become experts. And so we're recommending that there be a technical advisory committee composed of local experts that can represent each jurisdiction at the table and provide analysis and recommendations and data to the elected officials, so they can make good, informed decisions. And finally, the structure itself of the governance, we have been looking very closely at a lot of different governance structures and felt that within this region, because we already have a tri-county agency, and that is the Monterey Bay Air Resources District, that we would look at that as our template, or recommend something very similar to that template for the incoming board to consider in their formation. So with all this, I think the guiding principles are really what's most important, and that is, we want to see the opportunities present themselves here to this community, both as a local governments, local control, but most importantly, to take control of our own energy, and to look at ways that we can increase our portfolio at a much quicker rate in terms of moving to renewable energy, and to leverage that with local build-out of renewable energy as well. So that's a quick overview from our Project Development Advisory Committee, and be available for any questions.
Thank you so much, Patrick. Excuse me. And we have a few other members of our committee in here as well, who are your experts. Denver Toldi, who did represent County of Monterey here in the front row, and you have a gal over here who needs a card for a question, I believe. So we're trying to keep, we do want, yeah, we're trying to bundle them, so we can keep on time. But I do have a question, and thank you, Patrick, for answering the question for the cities and counties in the audience today of whether or not they need to form by October, or if they can come later. That was a big question. Can you please give us a very big snapshot of what are the pros and cons of a single county versus the region, or a single city versus the region forming a CCE?
That's an excellent question. So one of the things that PDAC did in charging our consultant with their actions was to really look at, one, an entirely bundled county, with all three counties participating, all three, all the jurisdictions within those counties also participating. And we also looked at each county individually, because we know there may be different levels of appetite to move forward. It may take some organizations or groups longer than others to make these key decisions. So the advantage of having a tri-county region is simply the economy of scale for administration. Being able to leverage those startup costs across three counties is much more cost-effective in terms of the initial investment than it would be for an individual, each individual county to form their own CCE. But we did have it studied in both ways, so that as we go forward with these discussions and these workshops, the individual counties can consider this, or you can consider the regional. But it is an economy of scale if we were to form with all three counties and as many members as are ready to commit to the JPA when it's formed. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. And again, if anybody has any additional questions, we can receive them at the end, or you can refer to our website, nbcommunitypower.org, for further information. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Kirby DeSalle, who's Vice President of Pacific Energy Advisors. He has served as the Lead Technical Consultant to Marin Clean Energy and Sonoma Clean Power, providing implementation support to them. He also has experience in the areas of resource procurement and planning, and has handled numerous solicitations on behalf of CCEs and JPAs across California. You're welcome.
Can everybody hear me okay? Good morning, and thank you for that introduction. I'm going to be spending a little bit of time today, kind of talking about the nuts and bolts, if you will, of CCE formation. And it wasn't too long ago that these studies used to be called feasibility studies or feasibility assessments, and there was a reason for that, because there weren't many of these CCE programs operating in the state. And it was really important to kind of evaluate whether or not this was a viable consideration at all. Well, since that time, we now know very well, in fact, that CCEs are a very viable energy services alternative. And so we've kind of transitioned, morphed away from the feasibility assessment name, and now we're just calling it a technical study, because we already know that it works. So what I'll be spending a little bit of time today doing is talking about kind of a Cliff Notes level of our technical study. So if you've got the time, it's a little more than 110 pages, pretty dense narrative in here, and a lot of different facts and figures about the projected operating results for a CCE program serving the tri-county area, to the extent you have the time. Again, I'd encourage you to take a look at it, but for purposes of today, we'll be going through the high points. You can see here just what we'll be walking through, and without belaboring any of these points, we'll just kind of jump right in and start with the purpose and the methodology for a CCE technical study for the tri-county region. Lots of small print here, and I apologize for that, but I'll walk you through it all. Why do you complete one of these things? Well, first and foremost, it's to understand what the operating results look like for a CCE program. In particular, what the financial outcomes look like on an operating basis, what the ability of the CCE looks like in terms of being able to deliver upon the environmental objectives, whether those are GHG emission savings, increased renewable energy procurement, and the like. Also, identification of economic development impacts. I think that's also something that's been of keen interest to many of the CCE programs, both aspiring and operating thus far. So that's something we looked at as well, using industry standard, publicly available models to estimate those impacts on an order of magnitude basis. And really, this study was completed in consideration of the best available market intelligence in terms of wholesale pricing, currently applicable PG&E rates and exit fees, and the like. And I think it's also noteworthy at this point, and I'll probably remind you of this as we work through the slide deck here, that wholesale market prices, PG&E rates, many other things are subject to change in this industry, and they're subject to change frequently, significantly, and really without notice. So I think what you see here is all very good news. The wholesale energy markets in terms of pricing have been very stable lately, so I think, please, keep that in mind. I don't make those comments to concern you necessarily, but I think it's just something important to be aware of. In terms of the purpose, just throw an umbrella over it here, this is really intended to support a go-no-go decision by the communities that are included in this study. It's not intended to be a detailed business plan for all of the different complementary energy programs that the CCE may choose to administer over time, things like energy efficiency, net energy metering, demand response, et cetera, et cetera. Those programs will appropriately be built out and planned for once the CCE moves towards implementation, and of course, continues operations thereafter. In the study, we looked at three prospective supply scenarios, trying to give you different flavors of what that resource mix could look like for your customers, and what the different economic outcomes would be under those different supply scenarios. You're not limited to those, though. There are literally an infinite number of combinations that you could pursue in terms of renewable energy content, carbon-free content, and various other resources that you would choose to bring into the portfolio, whether those are on the wholesale side or behind the meter. or behind the meter. All right. Okay, so forget the small print on the sides and just focus on kind of the flow chart here for a minute. When we're performing a technical study, one of the very key elements of that process is understanding the manner in which your prospective customers use electric energy. That's really fundamental to building up the cost structures, to comparing rates between the CCE program and PG&E and various other concerns. So that's where we start. We gather information from PG&E regarding historical customer energy usage within the tri-county area. We broke that out and fed that through a couple of different models that we use to understand what the likelihood of being able to meet your environmental objectives would be, assembling a supply portfolio to meet those energy requirements of your customers, and then kind of on the economic side of the equation or financial side of the equation, what that's likely to mean in terms of costs, and then ultimately, customer rates. That's fed through a pro forma analysis, and for purposes of the technical study, we considered a 10-year term, so a pretty long look forward at what we reasonably expect to see in terms of the outcome for this type of program. And part of that analysis was also looking at PG&E's expected rates over time, and we were pulling in best available information with regard to the different projects that they have in place, initiatives on the rate side of the equation, the policy mandates that also affect them, such as the renewables portfolio standard and increasing that statewide energy procurement mandate to 50% by 2030, and then comparing how it is that the CCE operations would look relative to PG&E over that timeframe. Again, we did look at economic impacts, and again, order of magnitude impacts. These are our numbers. When I put them up a little bit later, people kind of tend to go, wow, those are pretty big. And so I think we'll spend a little bit of time there just to make sure that everybody's understanding how it is that those numbers were derived, what they mean, where they're likely to exist in terms of the benefits, whether those are local or elsewhere. And all that information was gathered, and again, it kind of has been presented in this 110-plus-page report, which, again, I encourage you to read. Okay, so the little teeter-totter here. Part of the effort that we undertook at the staff level to determine which different supply portfolios we would evaluate through the technical study was really kind of focused on these trade-offs. As you can imagine, if you increase the content in terms of renewable energy or carbon-free energy, which are comparatively more expensive, say, relative to natural gas-fired electric generation, costs and rates go up. Similarly, when you add complementary energy programs, net energy metering, feed-in tariffs and the like, costs also go up, as well as the need for internal expertise and just general administrative competency to move those programs forward. So we kind of tried to balance that teeter-totter, if you will, and try to figure out what the appropriate trade-off mix was in framing those different supply scenarios, and again, there were three. Okay, so I mentioned that the technical study started primarily with developing an understanding for the manner in which customers use electric power within the tri-county area. And again, I know there's a lot of small font here, so I'm hoping that you all have these slides in print in front of you. This is a breakout, the uppermost slide being a high-level breakout, of electric energy usage and customer account composition within the tri-county area. The lower slide is a more detailed breakout by typical rate classifications that are used within the electric utility industry. If you look at that top table, you'll notice that there are about 285,000 electric accounts within the tri-county area. Those electric accounts use about 3.7 million megawatt-hours a year. That's actually quite large. We've recently completed a similar study for the San Mateo County area, and it's actually very, very similar in size to that program, and it's roughly double the current Marin Clean Energy Program. That'll change a little later in the year when they expand, but presently, that's the case. You also have a line item here called direct access electric accounts. And for those of you that might not be familiar with that term, these are accounts that participate under a provision in the Public Utilities Code that allows individual users to directly contract with particular suppliers of their choosing. So these are folks that don't take service from the incumbent utility. They rather buy power from third-party suppliers. Some of those suppliers may actually be folks that you consider doing business with down the road. But for purposes of the technical study, it's important to know how many of these customers you have and what portion of the electric energy use within the region is represented by those accounts, because you don't want to enroll those accounts in the program without first communicating with those customers, because it could put them in a situation where they're either paying for power twice, once from the CCE, a second time from the direct contractual relationship that they have in place with their third-party supplier, or it could violate their contract altogether with their third-party supplier. Most of these accounts in the direct access world tend to be larger energy users, very sophisticated buyers. They want that direct connection with the marketplace. They're familiar with the risks, and they don't mind taking them. So anyway, that's that line item. You sum those together, and that's kind of the aggregate of the energy usage within the region. Moving to the bottom table here, you can see a breakout by some classifications that may be familiar to you. The top one being residential, of course. 86% of the accounts in the region are represented by the residential classification. However, those accounts only use 36% of the electric power within the region, so relatively low intensity, if you will, in that particular class. Conversely, you have the various commercial classifications, small, medium, large, and industrial. Those all sum up to about 12% of the total customer accounts. However, those accounts use about 47%, 46% of the aggregate energy within the region. And what's a little bit unique here in the tri-county area, when you compare this particular program to some of the others, is the relatively high proportion of agricultural energy use. Only 2% of the accounts, but 18% of the aggregate energy that's being consumed. So that does make this particular program a little bit unique, and thought you all ought to know that. So in terms of the split in the tri-county area, you can see here the ratios of electricity consumption and then total account compositions. On the left here, electric consumption, you can see that Monterey County is the largest at 62%, and then with Santa Cruz and San Benito following thereafter, kind of similar in terms of the hierarchy there. On the right side with the accounts, 56% in Monterey County, and then going down to 7% in San Benito. So that's just a little snapshot there of the distribution within the tri-county area. And then this particular pie chart is really just a different way of looking at the table that we saw two slides ago. So this is just a more graphical look at the different breakout, and I think it becomes a little bit more striking when you look at the residential pies, slices, and see, again, on the left side there, we're talking about 36% of electric consumption in the residential class, represented by 86% of the total accounts. So again, there's kind of an energy intensity imbalance, but that's very common. Nothing unusual here whatsoever. And then again, more small print. 21 total communities within the tri-county area of the 21, five, represent almost 71% of total electric consumption and 67% of the total accounts, and I'll go ahead and read those off in case you can't see them. So that'd be Monterey Incorporated, Santa Cruz Incorporated, Santa Cruz Unincorporated, Salinas, and then Monterey Unincorporated as well. So those are kind of the five longest lines, if you will, on the horizontal bar chart here. All right, so I mentioned that as part of the technical study, we looked at three different supply scenarios, and we'll talk about those a little bit right now. I think just as an overarching comment, when looking at these different supply scenarios, and you heard this earlier from Patrick, one of the key considerations or constraints that was imposed on the technical study was that the use of unbundled renewable energy certificates would be excluded. Patrick kind of described unbundled renewable energy certificates or unbundled RECs a little bit. I'll just add another comment or two on this particular energy product that's available. One thing to point out here is that unbundled renewable energy certificates are allowed for use under the California Renewables Portfolio Standard Program. They are allowed for use in limited quantity, however. A second comment on unbundled renewable energy certificates, they have been a lightning rod for criticism and debate over the last 24 to 36 months, which is really a key reason why many buyers, including CCE programs, have made the choice to avoid these particular products entirely or in very limited quantities. And so that's just something to be aware of here. Those products were excluded. They also are the least-cost renewable energy product that's available out there in the marketplace. Nuclear and coal-based energy sources were also excluded from the technical study. Again, nuclear, for many, is a rather objectionable fuel source in the electric utility industry. Coal, of course, is a highly polluting fuel source, so both of those different supply options were excluded. And the third point here at the top of this slide is just bringing to your attention that each one of the three supply scenarios that were considered as part of the technical study reflect a high level of commitment to new resource development within the state of California. This has been something that has been kind of widely pursued by CCE programs throughout the state to date, supporting new project development through long-term contractual relationships that really provide the basis for financing and developing those projects over time. And now, many of the operating CCEs are actually taking electric power deliveries from those new facilities that they help support through those long-term contracts. Okay, so the three scenarios, what do they look like? What are the key parameters, if you will? Scenarios one and two are actually quite similar. There's a nuanced difference between the two. The fundamental principle, though, in scenarios one and two being that we want to maximize clean energy delivery to MBCP customers while maintaining rate parity with the incumbent utility. The difference between the two scenarios is the resource use within each one. So for scenario one, you see here in the parenthetical that only PCC1, or Portfolio Content Category 1, also known as Bucket 1, under the California RPS program, only those renewable energy resources and a small amount of hydroelectricity would be used in scenario one. Under scenario two, we've got the PCC1 flavor of renewable energy as well as PCC2. What does that mean? PCC1, or Bucket 1, renewable energy resources are primarily renewable resources that are located within the geographic boundaries of the state of California, or directly deliver power to the state of California from a nearby location. There are nuances that I won't get into with that definition, but that's kind of the fundamental distinction there as it relates to Bucket 1. Bucket 2 is a little bit different. These are resources that are typically located outside of the California borders and that deliver power into the state through, I'd say, contractually unique mechanisms. Basically, the renewable power can be produced out of state, and different sources of energy, maybe natural gas, maybe unspecified resources, can be delivered into the state to firm and shape, which is kind of the industry term, those renewable deliveries. It's still considered bundled renewable energy, but there is a distinction, and it's mostly geographic. So Bucket 1, California-based, primarily. Bucket 2, out-of-California, primarily. Okay, so scenario three. That was, I guess, the unique scenario amongst the three here, in the sense that it was primarily designed to maximize rate competitiveness or rate savings, while also achieving a 25% annual GHG emissions reduction relative to the incumbent utility. So that's really what we were looking at here in terms of framing the different scenarios, which were developed in discussions with staff. Okay, so the next three slides here, they're basically pie charts that are going to give you a sense for what the year-one resource mix would look like under each one of these different supply scenarios. You can see here that under scenario one, we've got a very high level of commitment to in-state renewable resources, 59%. I don't have a laser pointer here, do I? Anyway, so the green slide, big green slide, the 59%, those are all going to be California-based renewable resources primarily. That purple slide towards the top of the pie chart there, those are going to be hydroelectric power deliveries, typically regionally produced, could be in the Pacific Northwest, based on resource availability. But all in all, you've got about 70% of your resource mix that's going to be carbon-free in year one. If you were to fast-forward what this looks like, oh, great, thank you. So if you were to fast-forward and look at this pie chart 10 years down the road, and by the way, that very pie chart that I'm referring to is included in the technical study, you'd see that this green bar here, this green slice, that's going to continue to grow over the 10-year period, and then it's also going to be sectioned off with specific technologies associated with those different smaller slices. So if you can imagine, you'd have a slice of geothermal, a slice of wind, and these are all going to be slices that are represented or intended to represent purchases from those very resources that I mentioned, that the CCE would be supporting those new resources within the state of California. Okay, scenario two. So scenario two, you see that green slice of the pie. It grew considerably. Basically, it went and took out that purple hydroslice that was at the top. And the reason that that was possible under scenario two is because, as I mentioned before, we were going to be including not just the Bucket 1 in-state resources, but also a portion of the supply would be sourced from out-of-state renewables as well, which are typically less costly. So you're able to put in more new renewables to the supply portfolio and still maintain rate competitiveness. All right, and then scenario three. This was really about trying to grind down costs as much as you possibly could while still achieving a 25% GHG reduction each year. And you can see here, that's achieved by replacing a lot of that renewables with more of the lower-cost hydroelectricity that's regionally produced. Okay. By the way, there's going to be plenty of time for questions afterwards. So what do the operating results look like here after kind of understanding a little bit what the different scenarios entail? Well, they're actually kind of, I think, as we expected them to be in many, many regards. You can see here, the top line is really capturing the different resource mixes amongst the three different scenarios. The second line is focused on how do the rates compare? The third line is more focused on quantifying the monthly cost impacts that would accrue to a typical residential customer. And by the way, a typical residential customer within the tri-county region uses about 446 kilowatt-hours a month. It's a little bit less than you see in places like Marin, definitely less than you see in places like Lancaster, which has got a much warmer climate. The next row down here, we've got an assumption related to participation in the program. This is very important. You heard a little bit earlier about opt-out rates and the impact that can have on CCE performance. And then the bottom line here is the comparative GHG emissions impacts. As I mentioned before, you've got an overall 70% GHG-free content, 59% being comprised of renewable resources in scenario one. Scenario two is all of the GHG resources are renewable, that's 71%. And then moving over to scenario three, you've got a much lower content of renewable energy. So this is basically meeting the statewide mandate. In fact, it's exceeding it by just a very narrow margin, with the balance of the clean energy being provided by those regional hydroelectric resources. General rate parity, kind of per the specifications for the supply scenarios. General rate parity, kind of per the specifications for the supply scenarios under one and two here, with a 3% savings projected under scenario three. Again, those lower-cost hydroelectric resources used in place of renewables kind of contribute to the ability to save in scenario three. As a result of rate parity, you basically have zero cost impacts under scenarios one and two, and under scenario three, you've got about $3 a month average savings to a typical residential customer that's achieved as a result of that 3%. And then in terms of participation, and this is also an assumption that's kind of clearly laid out in the technical study, it's assumed that 85% of all customers would choose to remain with the MBCP program, stated somewhat differently, that means that 15% of customers are assumed to opt out. And that number, I would say it's somewhat conservative, but it's definitely informed by the statistics that we've seen elsewhere with California's operating CCE programs. Okay, so down to the bottom here, what happens in terms of the environmental impacts? Well, under scenario one in year one, we're looking at a 20% GHG emissions reduction here. Under scenario two, we're looking at another 20% reduction. Again, you can see here that the GHG-free content under scenario one and two is virtually identical, and then scenario three hops up a little bit. And I know that these percentages look like they're, that difference shouldn't be that stark, but I think, you know, we've got some rounding that's going on and whatnot, so the moral of the story is it's very close in terms of environmental performance in year one amongst the three different scenarios. Moving forward to year 10, you can see how the supply portfolio changes with time, additional renewables, a different, you know, different GHG-free mix as well, that's increasing over time, moving from the, moving from the 70% and 71%-ish metrics in year one to 85, 90, in that range in year 10. 1% savings is expected in both scenarios one and two, with a 5% savings expected under scenario three. That translates into roughly $1.60 a month savings for a typical residential customer under scenario one, about $1.80 under scenario two, and over $6 in scenario three. Participation assumptions remain constant over time, but you can see here on the bottom how the environmental impacts grow in terms of GHG emissions reductions, 42% in scenario one, 62 in scenario two, and 25%. Again, that was a constant assumption that was applied in the case of scenario three. So really, in all cases here, there are some very significant environmental benefits that result from the different supply scenarios. Okay, well, what about the financials? How does the program look from an operating perspective in that regard? Well, this slide here kind of summarizes again the total accounts that are assumed to participate in the program, 250,000 across the board. You saw earlier in the presentation, the total number of accounts within the region is higher than that, but of course, we've assumed a 15% opt-out rate, so that's how we get to that 250,000 number. About 3.2 million kilowatt, excuse me, 3.2 million megawatt-hours in annual sales, again, slightly less than the total sales that currently exist within the region, but that's all directly related to the 15% opt-out rate. So as customers opt out, you're not selling them power anymore, so that's what you're left with. Annual operating costs, in the cases of scenarios one and two, very similar. Again, you know, we're talking about a very comparable resource mix, very, very nuanced differences between scenarios one and two, so you'd expect the cost structure to be very similar. Under scenario three, however, when we kind of swap out renewable power for hydroelectricity, costs drop rather significantly. The annual contribution to reserve line item here, I think, is really important to spend a minute on here. It was assumed for purposes of the technical study that 4% of costs would basically be a planned dedicated reserve funding contribution each year. So that 9.6 million in the cases of scenarios one and two, and the 8.5 million in the case of scenario three is kind of 4% planned reserve. Anything that is accrued in terms of additional financial benefits would be in excess of that particular amount. So again, just prudent planning here, making sure that we've got money set aside for things like rate stabilization, building up the organization's credit profile, funding additional complementary energy programs and the like. And then you can see at the bottom here, the total revenue requirement, which for purposes of this calculation is basically a sum of the operating costs and reserves. And then the bottom line here is the expected change in MBCP customer charges. And to the extent that there's a negative number, as is the case in scenario three, that represents an opportunity to provide rate savings to customers. So you saw on those two summary slides here, we had the 3% savings projected in year one under scenario three and the 5% in year 10. The reason that you're able to do that is because your customers are basically paying $28 million less than they would if they were taking service from PG&E. And in the case of scenario two, that number is basically zero, which is consistent with the planning assumptions, which we're just trying to achieve rate parity, if that makes Looking for a moment at the environmental impacts, this is a 10-year average of the environmental impacts that would be achieved under each one of the different supply scenarios, the top line being the annual change in GHG emissions. So you can see in every case, there's a reduction relative to the incumbent utility. The line below that is the GHG equivalency impact. If you haven't done so, it's kind of fun to go on to the EPA's website. They've got a little GHG equivalency calculator, and you can plug in emission savings and see what that translates into in terms of cars taken off the road or trees planted and various other items like that, but it's not inconsequential as you can plainly see here from the metrics. Basically, GHG emissions reductions in the electric power sector, reductions ranging from 25% to 57% across the different scenarios. And then the bottom two rows are the, are kind of the actual projected emission factors for MBCP, that's the second to last line, and then the bottom line would be the projected PG&E emission factor for their supply portfolio on a 10-year average basis. Okay, so what about economic development impacts? The key driver of the economic development impacts that were summarized in the study, those are directly related to the expected new projects that would be supported as a result of MBCP commencing and continuing operations over time. In the study, it was assumed that roughly 340 megawatts of new renewable generating capacity would be developed as a result of contracting efforts undertaken by MBCP over its initial essentially eight to 10 years of operations. The total here at the bottom, however, is 390 megawatts, and the reason for the difference between the 340 in new renewable generating resources and the 390 megawatts total is that we also assumed, as a result of kind of historical contracting efforts undertaken by California's existing CCE programs, that there would likely be a component of the portfolio that would be sourced from geothermal resources. Those could be located in Southern California, Northern California, really anywhere where geothermal resources are available, but those resources really are existing resources. There are new, there is new geothermal capacity under development, but it's kind of slow to get traction, so we assume that you might decide to kind of engage one of those existing geothermal generators for a portion of your resource mix. So again, 340 megawatts of new renewable generating capacity, which leads to a whole lot of potential jobs being created throughout the state and really, quite frankly, the world, to be honest with you, because a lot of these components on the supply side for these different generating technologies are sourced not just within the U.S., but elsewhere in the world. So in total, during the construction of these different projects that amassed the 340 megawatts, you'd be looking at somewhere between 9,000 and 11,000 jobs during the construction stage, about 500 to 650 million dollars of earnings for those different individuals that would be working on those projects. And then when you consider the economic multiplier effects that play out over time, about 1.3 to 1.4 billion dollars in total economic impact as a result of these new projects that would be supported by contracts between MBCP and the project owners. Now, of course, not all of these, these jobs would accrue locally. There would be some, and you could certainly influence that based on the specifications that you decided to include within the contracts between MBCP and the resource owner, emphasizing things like local workforce utilization and the like. But again, I think it's noteworthy that only a small portion of these jobs are assumed to be supported within the local economy. And then the bottom portion of this table here is really focused on the operating years. So once you get a resource up and running, you've got to maintain it, you've got to repair it, you've got to operate it. Unfortunately, many renewable resources don't take a lot of operation and maintenance. You can imagine a solar panel that sits up there, it doesn't do a whole lot, so it doesn't support a whole heck of a lot of jobs on an operating basis. But in total here, you're looking at about 135 to 185 jobs that would be supported on an operating basis by the renewable projects contracted for by MBCP. And then, of course, you've got internal staff at the bottom here. Okay, so how was all this derived? Well, the National Renewable Energy Laboratory has, they've got a series of Excel-based, so spreadsheet-based models called the Jedi Models or Jobs and Economic Development Impact Models. These are readily available, you can download them from, the public can download them from the web. They have models specifically tailored to different generating technologies, and so we use the appropriate model for the specific technology that was assumed to be supported under the MBCP supply portfolio to derive these jobs and economic development impact projections. And, you know, I think one of the points that I'd just like to make on this slide is that PV or photovoltaic solar is really, kind of has the largest jobs impact in terms of construction jobs with basically 17 construction jobs supported per megawatt. Not very much on the operating side, though, only about 2.27 jobs per megawatt on a going-forward Okay, so what happens if things don't pan out exactly like you expect them to? There are certainly risks and uncertainties. I think many of the operating CCEs have directly experienced some of those risks, and I think it's important that you all understand what those are and how it is that they may impact the MBCP projections that you see in the technical study. This slide here just has a risk of some, a list of some very common risks, things like PG&E rates. We don't know what they are. We get very kind of late notice information regarding PG&E rates. Those rates are typically announced very late in the year, as in like December 30th for the subsequent year. And so from a planning perspective, that is an uncertainty. You do get a little bit of information leading up to those rate changes, but it's not precise. Right now, I think it's been pointed out already that we're in a fairly prolonged trough in the wholesale electricity markets in terms of pricing. This has been a bearish market, been very good for buyers, and I think the operating CCE programs have been able to take advantage of that. How long is that trough going to last? Nobody knows for sure, but there's nothing out there in most folks' crystal balls that suggests that things would change anytime soon. We seem to be pretty stable in terms of where the wholesale energy market is right now and where it's likely to go over time. There will inevitably be some blips, but I think we're kind of looking good for the foreseeable future, if you will. One of the key points I think I'd want to make, and it's already been pointed out previously, is just the availability of large hydroresources to fulfill the GHG reduction goals of this particular CCE as well as CCEs at large. As you can imagine, the capacity that exists out there in the marketplace for these types of resources is finite. They're not really developing much more of it. It is highly influenced by seasonal and annual weather patterns, and to the extent that more and more CCEs continue to form with these aspirational goals of reducing carbon emissions over time, there will be increased competition for this hydroelectricity. So that's just something to be aware of. There are certainly mitigating strategies that can be used to deal with that uncertainty. Buying more renewable energy would be one of those, for example, in place of the large hydro, but that does come at a cost. Opt-out risk, that seems to be on the decline, to be perfectly plain. Most of the operating CCEs out there, the trend is downward as each new CCE launches. It seems to outperform the last in terms of opt-out, customer opt-outs. So again, I think that the assumptions in the study are rather conservative at 15%. They are informed by what we've noticed elsewhere with California's operating CCEs, but I think it's reasonable to assume that you could outperform that in terms of achieving lower opt-out rates. So I think another key piece of the risk puzzle, if you will, is just kind of the credit capacity of the new market entrant here, the, you know, CCEs, they typically come to the market with, you know, they've got very limited experience. Of course, now, we're seeing a growing successful track record for operating CCEs throughout the state, but that is something that they certainly need to address in order to be able to buy power on a forward basis. All of the CCEs thus far have been able to kind of overcome that hurdle, but it is something that certainly requires some thought. Legislative issues, those can always pop up, but I think, you know, with growing numbers, the CCE community has been more and more effective in fending off those risks and kind of allaying those concerns over time. And then, of course, regulatory changes, many of which stem from the legislative side. You just need to be very active in that arena, requires a high level of on-the-ground support. MCE in particular has built out a regulatory staff internally of many individuals, and those individuals spend a great deal of time in San Francisco at the Public Utilities Commission, in Sacramento at the California Energy Commission, and at the legislature as well. So this is just something that you definitely need to have on your radar moving forward. All right, so when you take these risks into consideration in terms of a sensitivity analysis, what does it actually mean? Well, all of these little numbers and little text up here, I think I'll just direct your attention to the yellow boxes. The yellow boxes are instances where if things change materially in terms of renewable energy costs or PG&E rates being lower than we expect or exit fees being higher than we expect, these are kind of stress cases, so basically higher-than-expected or lower-than-expected scenarios in terms of prices or costs that would put the CCE in a position where its rates might be somewhat higher than the incumbent utility. And so I'll just highlight a couple of those for you. As you can imagine, the very high level of commitment of the CCE here to renewable energy procurement would create potential exposure if renewable energy prices kind of went up considerably. So under a stress case where renewable energy prices rose by 25%, the CCE's rates would be somewhat higher than PG&E's. It's not expected to be the case again, so these are just kind of stress cases, if you will, unexpected cases where the market may change in certain regards that would put the CCE in a position where its rates might be higher. Of course, if PG&E's rates trend lower in terms of annual escalations than we're used to seeing, the comparison might be a little tighter, but it's still very, very close here. There are no kind of wide divergences between expected CCE rates and PG&E rates. One of the things, though, that I think is important to point out, we did run a scenario under which we increased the PCIA by 50% above its already high level. And of course, that was a situation that did create an occasion where the CCE's rates would be a bit higher than- would be a bit higher than PG&E's when you add in those exit fees. But again, 50% movement in the PCIA, while, I guess, in theory, it could happen, I think the probability of that is fairly unlikely. But I think it's important to understand, that you all understand how it is that these numbers could impact the operating results. All in all, though, at the end of the day, you've got 52 different sensitivity scenarios that were essentially run as part of this technical study, and I would say only seven of those are actually kind of worth considering. So, seven out of 52 instances where, you know, the CCE rates could be somewhat higher, not a lot higher, but somewhat higher than PG&E's rates. So, again, we wanted to be responsible, wanted to look at situations where things could move against the CCE, and so here they are. The rightmost column, we call it a perfect storm column, kind of fun to look at, but I wouldn't dwell on it too much because we basically have items that are kind of negatively correlated that are built in to this particular scenario, truly representing a perfect storm situations where, you know, PG&E rates would fall and market prices would fall tremendously and, you know, everything kind of moves against you while renewable energy costs go up. And, you know, it's basically just throwing things into a blender, and that's not going to happen again. These items are negatively correlated, but I think it's just kind of interesting to look at truly what a worst-case scenario would be, and to be honest with you, it's not that bad. The CCE still compares fairly well, and when you consider the very high level of renewable energy and GHG-free content in the portfolio, it's still very competitive, in my estimation. All right, so, last slide here, I think the, really the main thing I want to leave you with is that there is a very high level of viability that we saw after completing this technical study. There's no right answer. Again, we ran these three scenarios based on discussions with staff, but you can choose to go in any direction you like. So, you could tweak the numbers to create a little bit more savings and a little bit less clean energy, or any combination that makes the most sense to you as you move forward with this organization. But there are a very broad range of projected scenarios under which MBCP looks to be highly viable. So, thank you, and pass the mic.
Don't go away, Kirby. So, we are a little bit behind, but we have a couple of questions, and they're not all for Kirby. They're from prior presentations, so we're going to go over them very quickly to make sure that folks who did submit questions in writing will get their questions answered today. I would like to note that, especially for the County of Monterey staff and all the other partners here, that your Project Development Advisory Committee did form two ad hoc committees on governance and finance. And the people that are coming to those committee meetings are high-level executive staff from your county and city partners. And I was just talking to Joanne Iomoto of the county. So, you're not alone in analyzing all of this information internally to your executive staff. You can partner with executive staff from your county and city partners at that table. The County of Santa Cruz will be hosting those meetings. Right now, I think it's anticipated there'll be four of those committee meetings where we will be able, you will be able to access directly our cadre of consultants, get your questions answered in advance and at the table, and talk to your fellow county councils and executive staff on finance options and governance assumptions, which are the two big key areas you need to understand before you can make a recommendation. So, we just wanted to make sure that you understood that there is a process that you don't have to invent. So, a couple of questions here. One for Kirby, I'll have you go over first, and that is, can you tell the audience a little bit about, oh, I'm losing the question. Tell us a little bit about how PG&E is reacting to the loss of revenue, and how does the exit fee, how was the CCE formation affecting the exit fee situation?
Yes, so, I think maybe first and foremost, the comment that I would make in response to that question is that there is not necessarily a relationship between the level of the exit fee and CCE formation. What I mean by that is, if CCEs form, that in and of itself does not increase the exit fee. So, the, basically, if PG&E is going to lose customers to CCE formation, that exit fee calculation is performed under a methodology that isn't influenced by that phenomenon at all. So, customers leave, that exit fee, there's essentially, so that if you leave as a CCE customer, you're going to pay that exit fee, and that exit fee is influenced not by CCE formation, but by the relationship between PG&E's total portfolio cost, which is essentially, it's a summation of all of the costs that are included in PG&E's supply portfolio, so renewable contracts, utility-owned generation, et cetera, et cetera, at any given point in time, minus a, what they call a market price benchmark, which is intended to reflect the wholesale cost of energy kind of at that same point in time. So, that difference between the two, you can imagine that that will change because PG&E will have new contracts in its portfolio that are phased in. Over time, resources are under development. Once those contracts begin delivering power, the costs associated with those deliveries become part of their portfolio. To the extent that those costs are relatively high, those will drive the PCIA up. And so, again, it's the relationship between PG&E's total portfolio cost and the market price benchmark, and that calculation is performed annually. It's overseen by the Public Utilities Commission, and the rate that is derived as a result of that calculation, the exit fee or PCIA, which is the Power Charge Indifference Adjustment, that is imposed on departing customers regardless of how many CCEs form. So, you know, I will say that, you know, there's been, I think, a very positive transition in terms of working with PG&E since MCE formed and now, you know, the relationship has been very cooperative. So, you know, in terms of reacting to lost revenue, I don't see any outward reaction other than what's, you know, permitted under the Public Utilities Code and administered by the Public Utilities Commission in terms of carrying out these calculations that affect departing CCE customers.
Thank you. So, we had a couple of other questions. The question about the JPA is subject to the Brown Act, absolutely. It is subject to the Brown Act. And the Technical Advisory Committee that is being recommended by your PDEAC to be formed of industry experts without a conflict, that would likely be a Brown Act as well. I would imagine that's a best practice, and we'd want to make sure that was. But they are advisory, and they would be not voting on revenue-generated projects. It would be advising the elected officials on the board if that recommendation moved forward. So, hopefully, that answers your questions. I do want to, again, point out, if you've got more questions, because I know this is a lot of information we're throwing at you, you can email us, and you can also fill out one of these. This is the best, and there's a whole bunch of them around the room, because then we can get your answer in writing to you and get you some touch point, a personal touch point. And then I have one for, thank you, Kirby. It was great. You did a great job. I have one workforce question that I'll answer. A couple of questions about workforce development and local climate action plans, which emphasize local renewable build-out. As you saw with Patrick Matthews' presentation, your Regional PDEAC Committee, who advised this process the last three years, has recommended that a long-term strategy should be for local renewable build-out, for local jobs at fair wages with benefits. That's what we want. And so, the answer to this is, you start a CCE agency, you build capacity by going out and procuring the best bundled renewable energy credits that you can that are affordable and financially sustainable. You build organizational capacity over a couple of years and pay off that startup debt as it did in Sonoma. You book your surplus revenues, and then you have a great problem. You get to decide on how you're going to spend that money. And that's when you really start to envision that really long-term local build-out. So, I see that the long-term strategic recommendations and goals of this agency would be completely consistent with your local climate action plans. So, thanks again to Kirby. I'm going to have Carol introduce our next speaker.
Thank you, Ginny. At this time, I'd like to introduce David Silberman, who is the General Counsel for Peninsula Clean Energy and also Chief Deputy County Counsel for the County of San Mateo. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good morning, everybody. I understand I have 15 minutes. That's not a lot of time to give a lawyer, so I will do my best. The legal aspects, you're at a formation stage right now. The legal aspects are not terribly complicated. The law under, for CCAs is not terribly complicated. The focus at this point for the lawyers is really the JPA document. And frankly, what we found as we were forming was that the various city attorneys, to a lesser extent, and we were the county council's office, we didn't have multiple counties, there was concern about legal liability, and it took a little while for the lawyers to understand why legal liability was not a huge concern and why those concerns could be alleviated. But I do suggest that you get your lawyers involved early, both to resolve the liability issue as well as to get to work on the JPA agreement. We put ours together in about two months. That was not a lot of time. We got it done, but it was a little more rushed than I think we would have liked. So, I have 10 slides in 15 minutes. Let's see if I can pull it off. AB 117 was adopted in 2001. It's the law that governs CCAs. It's not very complicated. It's in two areas of the Public Utilities Code. It really does not set a lot of requirements. I will talk about them very briefly. So, it requires an ordinance. On the next slide, you'll see a link to the San Mateo County's ordinance. It's just, it's not a very complicated ordinance. It doesn't say very much. All it says is, "We want to be a Community Choice Energy Program." It really doesn't take much time to put together. It really doesn't take much time to explain. It's not complicated at all. The implementation plan is not something you need to worry about right now. That's something that you would be concerned about after you've formed whatever you've formed to run your Community Choice Energy Program. And frankly, it's also something that you're going to have your advisors put together. PEA put ours together. It's a technical document. It's not terribly legal, but it is a requirement. I didn't hear any discussion of the opt-out notices, but I assume they were covered already. These are the notices that go out to your new customers, telling them that they can opt out, what their rates are going to be. The Public Utilities Code does require four. It does require that you serve all customers. We just had a discussion of the PCIA. Obviously, that makes PG&E whole and is why, you know, PG&E is not quite as concerned about Community Choice Energy Programs as it would otherwise be. There's another law that was adopted in 2010, which limits the incumbent utility's ability to market against Community Choice Energy Programs and makes it very difficult for them to do so, and they haven't done so. All customer classes need to be treated the same, and then there's some other additional requirements that aren't of terrible concern right now. That's a link. I assume you'll have a copy of our presentation. That's a link to our ordinance. So, CEQA, everybody's favorite subject in government. What we did to comply with CEQA is, well, first of all, we concluded that CEQA did not apply. That was the same conclusion that was raised by the other operating Community Choice Energy Programs. We did file a categorical exemption. I did present on this at the County Council's Association this spring. Mr. McKee was there and saw the presentation. There were some questions raised as to whether or not this method of compliance with CEQA was sufficient, but the response to that is it's worked three times already, and PG&E hasn't challenged it. And if they really thought it wasn't a valid basis for complying with CEQA, they would have done so. So, as I indicated, the primary issue for the lawyers right now would be the formation of a joint powers agreement, assuming that's how you're planning on operating. The Act, the Public Utilities Code actually contemplates the formation of a JPA. That's how we did it in San Mateo County, as well as Marin and Sonoma. You know, the primary JPA advantage is one of liability. You are creating a new entity that is separate from the constituent public entities, and you are writing into the agreement that any liability, any failure, is with the JPA and not with the constituent members of the JPA. So, the primary issues in JPA formation for us, and I believe for other entities as well, was voting, how you're going to do it. You know, issues come up. I, you know, I saw the presentation with respect, you saw the diversity of the amount of energy that's used. You know, it could be that some of the larger energy users would say, "Well, why should a smaller county or a smaller city have the same vote as we do?" And there are ways to address that concern. In the agreements that Sonoma, Marin, and the county adopted, there is what we call weighted voting, which basically allows both for a one, entity-one vote, as well as it takes into account the various energy uses of the jurisdiction. It's actually way less complicated than it seems, but way too complicated for a 15-minute presentation. If folks have questions, my contact information is the end. I'm happy to talk to your attorneys. And as I indicated before, at least Mr. McKee has already seen a much more complex presentation than this one. Cover this slide. Yeah, just one last, you know, comment on this. We have a 22-member board in San Mateo County. That's a really big board. It's going very well. We have a very collaborative community in San Mateo County. I suspect you folks do as well. But as you expand, you know, beyond one county, you know, there may not be the closeness and relationships as perhaps we have in one county. You may consider trying to form a smaller board. I understand, and Lean Energy can inform you more about this, that Marin, as it's gotten bigger, has begun to explore a way of making a smaller board, you know, with proxy voting. You can make this as simple or as complicated as you like, but I would caution against having a very large board if you aren't extremely collaborative, because there are a lot of difficult decisions to make, and some of them can be political and, you know, as politics differ among jurisdictions, like, for example, what percentage of GHG-free energy do you want to have? I mean, it seems simple, but even in our very collaborative county, we've had some differences of opinion, with some communities wanting more GHG-free and some, you know, being more focused on price. So, these are some of the issues that came up in our discussions. There was, you know, you have to pick a treasurer or auditor. It's often easier, easiest to pick a treasurer from one of the constituent counties. Of course, that requires some trust. The treasurer's role is not super significant, but if you don't have a treasurer from one of your counties that you think would be willing to step up to do it, then you might explore having an outside treasurer auditor. Some of the jurisdictions express concern about the eminent domain power of the JPA. We did include it despite the fact that there were some concerns about that, even though we had no intent to use eminent domain. We did, we do recommend that you consider having alternate board members, especially if your board gets big. And you have a link there to our agreement, which is a variation of Sonoma and Marin's. There was a question earlier about the Brown Act. Yes, the JPA is going to be a Brown Act entity. There's no question about that. That does raise some additional challenges, easily overcome, because in the context of energy procurement, prices are usually, are very dynamic and are only good for about an hour, and obviously, you can't convene a Brown Act meeting in an hour. So, there has to be some trust and delegation to either a CEO or a non-Brown Act committee that can act for the agency, keeping in mind that, you know, the agency is going to have a lot of information when it delegates authority. You know, these are other issues that we've had to consider now that we're formed. They're not, they're not issues that you need to worry a ton about now, although some of them do sort of dovetail to some of the issues that will be raised in the context of the JPA agreement and liability. I mean, obviously, insurance goes a long way to alleviating concerns about liability. One of the issues you'll eventually have to discuss One of the issues you'll eventually have to discuss is, you know, to the extent you have staff, whether you're going to follow a pure public entity model, especially with respect to retirement, or you're going to use a divine contribution model, which is what we, as well as Sonoma and Marin, have done. All right. I think I probably used more than 15 minutes, but I went as fast as I could under the circumstances. You know, I'll be around to answer any questions folks have.
Sure.
Thank you. And at this time, we don't have any legal questions. But for those of you who are interested in receiving any of these slide decks, if you can leave us your information, your email address, there's a forum at the table out front, just outside, we'll be happy to send those to you. And at this time, I'd like to welcome back Kirby, who will discuss finance and credit.
Thank you. All right. Great. I think compared to the last presentation, which definitely had a lot more meat on the bones, this one should move rather quickly, and is primarily intended to just provide an overview of the kind of financing discussion generally, and then the financing requirements that have been projected for MBCP, as they directly relate to the technical study that was completed. So, you can probably imagine a lot of the information that's provided on this slide yourselves, but clearly, you know, there's a need to cover certain costs when the CCE decides that it's going to move forward. Some of those costs, you know, have already been incurred, in terms of getting the study completed, and various other advice and whatnot that you've received to date in order to move you thus far. But once you make the decision to move forward, of course, additional costs will be incurred as you move towards the finish line, which is really the starting line for launching MBCP. And some of this information is summarized within the technical study itself. I'll put this slide up now, so you can look at it while I talk about the points that were on the last slide. While I do that, just keep in mind that this table right here, again, it's included in the technical study, is listing out the different startup costs that you would be responsible for covering as you move towards program launch, and then shortly after launch, before you receive rate revenues from your customers. So, clearly, these startup costs, they need to be covered. You can see here, you're looking at about $2.2, $2.3 million. These are relatively conservative estimates, but they are informed based on our experience working with the operating CCE programs out there. So, you could go a little bit kind of tighter in terms of the, you know, allowance for these items, but I don't think you'd want to change things too much, because you will need staff. You will need some support from folks other than staff. You will incur some different fees that are going to be imposed by the incumbent utility in order to kind of get you up and running. There's a bond that needs to be posted with the Public Utilities Commission before you can operate. And in addition to those startup costs that are listed here, you'll also have a working capital need. You're going to be buying power in the wholesale market. Those suppliers will expect to be paid for that power. Unfortunately, you'll need to pay for that power, in many cases, before you receive all the revenue from your customers in order to cover the costs associated with paying for that power. So, there will be, need to be funds available in order to cover that lag in timing between when the suppliers of power need to be paid, and when your customers are going to be paying you. And then there will also be reserve amounts that need to be funded as well. So, suppliers out there, you can reasonably imagine, these folks want to make sure that there are sufficient funds available at all times to cover the costs associated with buying power in the wholesale market. Funding a small reserve amount has been something that's been effectively negotiated by each one of the operating CCE programs. That amount is above zero, but still is pretty favorable in terms of what it could be. And we'll talk a little bit about that on one of the upcoming slides here. And the sources of the funding that you can pursue in order to meet these needs, there are a few different options. Clearly, bank loans, letters or lines of credit, and then also member contributions. And I think, at this point in time, you know, you should probably leave all those options on the table until that, those discussions are more kind of complete. But, you know, in terms of the member contributions, this has been a route that has been pursued by certain of the operating CCE programs. And it's my understanding that all of those members, those municipalities, that offered up any funding to facilitate the launch of the CCE program, they were paid back timely or in advance of the agreed-upon timeline, as a result of successful CCE operations, So, what are those working capital requirements that have been estimated as a result of carrying out the technical study? Well, it looks like it's somewhere between $10 and $11 million. This is additive to the startup cost that you saw the last slide. This amount here includes an assumed $500,000 deposit that needs to be made with the CAISO, which stands for the California Independent System Operator. This is the entity that operates the state's bulk electric grid, and really, the majority of the state's bulk electric grid. And they require deposit in order to participate in the markets that they administer, and that amount is reflected here. That reserve funding that I talked about earlier, $2.25 million, that's also reflected in this working capital estimate. And then primarily, this amount is intended to address timing issues. So, clearly, again, you have to pay for power. Your customers are paying you after you bill them. Those timelines aren't exactly synced up, so you'll need some cash on hand when you begin operating in order to cover those costs. This particular estimate does assume a 60-day payment term, which has been successfully negotiated by a couple of the operating CCE programs. This is different than the 30-day, kind of more traditional, payment timeline. And if you were only able to negotiate those terms, the working capital amount would increase by approximately $15 million. So, the 60-day payment timeline has been something that suppliers have been agreeable to. It's been very favorable in terms of minimizing the initial capital requirements for CCE programs. And we'd certainly recommend that if MBCP moves forward, they pursue similar timing in order to minimize their working capital requirements as well. So, as you consider what it is that you're going to do in terms of securing the necessary financing for this program, there are a number of kind of key points to keep in mind. Obviously, you need to identify who it is that you'd be working with in terms of the financiers. Are those the member communities? Are those banking institutions? Is it a combination of both? What's the relationship between those different entities? Will a guarantee be required by any or all of the municipalities if a loan or line of credit is pursued? Timing of service commencement, so this is really important, too. When you choose to launch for certain customer classifications, the commercial classifications in particular, there are some rather significant seasonal differences between rates that are charged to those customers. Winter rates are typically rather low. Summer rates are comparatively high. And you can imagine that depending on the time of year during which you launch, particularly if you launch during the winter months, your revenues will be relatively low if you choose to match PG&E's rate schedule or structure, or something similar to that, anyway, which could put some additional pressure on your working capital requirements when those rate revenues are relatively low. The flip side is also true. If you launch more in that summer season, when your cost of power remains relatively similar to what it is in the winter, but your rate revenues are higher, then that revenue collection can help diminish that working capital requirement. And then, of course, how it is that you choose to phase in your customers. In the technical study, we assumed a three-phase implementation approach that would be carried out over what amounts to a 25-month term. So, a third of the customers enrolled in month one, a third of customers enrolled a year thereafter, and then the remaining, last third of customers enrolled a year after that. You could choose to take that in smaller bites, and that would also minimize or reduce your working capital requirements. So, you do have options. And I think, as you choose to move forward here, those are the things that you may want to evaluate and spend a little bit of time figuring out what works best for you, in light of your willingness to pursue various lending and borrowing arrangements out there. And I think that's really kind of all I wanted to go over on the financing side of the equation. It's certainly a very relevant discussion. It's been taken up recently by some of the soon-to-be-launching CCE programs, and happy to answer questions if you have any.
Couple of questions, not all about financing. So, several of the financing questions we got, you answered in your presentation. Thank you, Kirby. Great. Can you speak really briefly, so these are a little bit all over the map, but you are one of our experts, so could you speak very briefly about, how does a renewable power development incentives work? How does a CCE help incentivize community-scale solar? And how do CCE programs compare to PG&E's regional solar choice?
Okay, all good questions. You've got another hour, I hope. So, just, I think, at a very high level, what CCEs have been very effective in doing to date, and Mark talked about this earlier, with Sonoma Clean Powers, ProFit, right? I got that? Okay, perfect. MCE has also been very effective in stimulating local project development on the renewable side through its feed-in tariff program. And basically, the way they've been able to do that is by providing and offering comparatively superior pricing schedule, and then also contract terms for local developers. And I think PG&E, so PG&E has a feed-in tariff of its own. It was rebranded a little while back. Now, it's called the REMAT, or Renewable Energy Market Adjusting Tariff. The rates there are declining over time. Right now, I think the rate that's offered is in the low $60 range, and there are time of delivery adjustments that tend to amplify that price somewhat. But CCEs have been very effective in offering their own programs with comparatively higher prices that reflect the costs of developing projects locally. And as a result, in the case of MCE, they've been able to get a very high level of interest, support, full development of a 1-megawatt solar project with another, actually, that recently launched, so a full 2-megawatts, with many more on the way. So, that's kind of one thing that they've done. Net energy metering has been used with comparatively high incentives to, you know, incentivize smaller-scale solar installations on residential and business sites. And then the regional solar choice, and the whatever, PG&E solar choice. So, those are more kind of community-based solar options. And I think certain municipal utilities, SMUD, for example, the Sacramento Municipal Utility District, they have a wildly successful program that's very similar. It's called Solar Shares, where it allows customers to kind of directly participate in locally situated Sacramento County-based solar installations. PG&E's program is a little bit different, because their service territory is so large, and so you've got a couple of different flavors that allow customers to kind of buy power directly from kind of local or regional, smaller-scale solar projects. And I think, in the case of Marin, for example, they've kind of developed their own answer to that, which is a truly local, in-service territory, Marin-based photovoltaic solar installation that customers can buy power from directly as well. So, I think you've got a range of options in terms of structuring programs and incentives, and how it is that you choose to improve upon what already exists, or innovate something new entirely. I don't know if that touched on all that.
Yeah, we touched on it a few minutes, but that's great. And we are going to have a networking opportunity. If you've got more questions for Kirby, or any of our consultants, we'll be here for another half hour. And if your blood sugar is going down, we have little power bars in the lobby, so feel free to help yourself. There's another question, as a county facility. The question is, should we look at prospects such as solar and our own? I'm going to guess what you want to know is, should you be building solar in your own county facilities? And there are a customer of the CCE potentially, and certainly, they could do that and sell that back to the CCE.
Yeah, sure. I think you've got a couple of different directions you could go. You could become a net energy metering customer, assuming that MBCP chose to offer a net energy metering tariff, which I believe it plans to do. You could participate in that program, in which case, if those solar panels are on your rooftop, when, at the point that you transition over to the CCE, you really wouldn't notice any change, other than whatever incentives are put in place by the CCE program, for that NIM program, that it chooses to administer independently of PG&E. If the project or installation is a little bit larger, and you aspire to be a direct wholesale supplier, rather than a net energy metering customer, you could participate under a feed-in tariff program as well. So, I think, you know, you've got options. I don't think your, you know, your outcomes are diminished at all under CCE service. In fact, I think they would be improved, so.
Thank you, Kirby. Thank you to all of our consultants. Carol has a few concluding remarks. Please stick around for questions, for direct FaceTime with our consultants.
So, thank you all, to our presenters and all of you for attending today. In case you missed anything in regards to this presentation, or you are no staff who would also like to attend, there will be two more study sessions happening on Thursday, June 9th, one beginning at 9:30 in the County of Santa Cruz Board of Supervisors Chambers, the other beginning at 3 o'clock in the afternoon at San Bonito County Board of Supervisors Chambers. So, that will be the conclusion of the additional two special study sessions. After that, the County of Santa Cruz will be leading the formation of the two ad hoc committees, which will be on finance and governance. We will be sending out invitations to city and county staff who would be interested in being on one of these committees. So, we anticipate that those meetings, probably four of them, will be happening in July. Again, if you have any additional questions, you can go to the website, mbcommunitypower.org. Also, it has best practices, the technical study, a lot of information. And again, if you want information sent out to you, just leave us your email address at the back. And like Ginny said, well, our experts will be around for another half an hour to answer any additional questions. Thank you.
[applause][1773.98]